I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, December 4th, 2024. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so is the first meeting in the month of December, so after we have a couple administrative things to do. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Kathy Allen, Mary Washington, and Josh Guy for their elections. This is their first full board meeting, so we had the swearing-in ceremony bright and early at eight o'clock this morning, for those of you that were here. And then, in addition, on this first meeting, we have to elect the officers of the Board of Education. So, I would like a motion to temporarily suspend the rules and have the Secretary Treasurer, i.e. Dr. Smith, preside over the meeting for the purposes of elections.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so with that, we turn everything over to Dr. Smith.
Pass the, never mind, I'll just say it. Uh, the floor is now open for nominations for the Office of Chairman of the Board of Education for St. Mary's County Public Schools. Do I have a nomination for the Chairman of the Board?
I nominate Karen Bailey for Chairman of the Board of Education.
Any other nominations? Karen Bailey, do you accept the nomination for Chairman?
I do.
Fantastic. Alright, then I guess all we have to do is vote. All in favor of Karen Bailey for the Office of Chairman signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Well, there you go. Mrs. Bailey is the Chairman of the Board of St. Mary's County Public School. The floor is now open for nominations for the Office of Vice Chairman of the Board of Education for St. Mary's County Public Schools. Do I have a nomination?
I nominate Kathy Allen for Vice Chair to Board of Education.
Alright, Ms. Kathy Allen, do you accept the nomination of Vice Chairman?
I do.
Fantastic. All in favor of Kathy Allen for the Office of Vice Chairman signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Fantastic, you are indeed now the Vice Chairman. Is there a motion to return to the regular rules with Ms. Karen Bailey assuming the duties as Chairman of the Board?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you have it. The gavel is back to you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Moving forward, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Alright, next up is the Superintendent and Student Board Member report.
Oh, fantastic. So this is gonna go all the way back into last month. Uh, we had our final all-county honor concert for the, for the fall. We won't be doing this again until the spring. So middle and high school chorus concert was last Thursday before we went away to break. What a fantastic performance, what great directors. It was really a wonderful evening, and it was wonderful to be also joined by all of our middle school and high school principals. The last play, if you didn't get to see Macbeth, or not Macbeth, sorry, Romeo and Juliet, if you didn't get to see The Curious Savage, hopefully you got to see Your Good Man Charlie Brown at Great Mills High School. They did a really nice job with it. It was fun. It was the perfect play to put you in that, that glorious Peanuts mood right before we went to Thanksgiving and over eight. That was really wonderful. And for an awe moment, Becky Stevens and all of the friends at Asbury knitted, crocheted these incredible kids for our pre-K and Judy Center kids, and aren't they just adorable? So let's all take a moment, awe, awe. Thank you very much for our friends. That really is a wonderful thing. Here we are in December. Um, we have a board of meeting, obviously, we're today, we have another one on the eighteenth, so we have two board meetings in the month of December. You are also lucky. Uh, we are doing our fifth grade visits all throughout this month. We did Ridge yesterday. We do White Marsh and Banneker next week. Um, then we have Mechanicsville Elementary and Town Creek on the seventeenth, eighteenth. Then we have Slack meeting coming up on the twelfth. On the twentieth, just a mere two weeks away, we have an early dismissal. And then we go into winter break, and that is seventeen days of parents getting to enjoy their children as much as we enjoy their children every single day. So with that, Ms. Hannah Heisler.
Wow, I really like the, the purple.
Yeah, I put purple in there.
The calendar, that's awesome. Alright, so as Dr. Smith just said, um, we had a visit with Ridge Elementary School yesterday, um, and then coming up on December tenth, I have White Marsh, and then December eleventh, Benjamin Banneker, December seventeenth, Mechanicsville Elementary, and December eighteenth, Town Creek. So very exciting couple weeks coming up. Um, lots of fifth grade, which is super fun. Um, as far as the Superintendent Student Leadership Council goes, we have a steering committee, and so that, um, organizes everything, and so we've met this Monday to finalize preparations for our assembly on December twelfth, and we are highlighting how students can be more engaged in their learning. Um, so we're gonna bring that back to our principals, and then we're specifically going to talk about how they can be more engaged and create a community of engagement about the bathrooms, because that's been a big issue, and we're really excited because the culinary program at the tech center is providing us food, so we're having a pasta bar, so I'm very excited for that. Um, for the St. Mary's Association of Student Councils, which I sit on as an ex officio member, as a student member of the Board, we're planning for our December General Assembly. Um, we do have workshops and everything planned out, however, the date is kind of tentative and up in the air, so we're hoping to get it scheduled. Um, and then for MASC, um, the Maryland Association of Student Councils, we have winter convention upcoming, um, and so that will actually have a SMAB panel, so I will sit on the panel and talk about St. Mary's County. And what I'm doing as the student member of the Board, which is a really great opportunity, um, to hear ideas about what other student members of the Board are doing, and hopefully inspire other people. I know at our last meeting, I talked about how I go on school visits and meet fifth grade, and that inspired a few other student members of the Boards to also do that, so that was really helpful. Um, and then FLC, which is Fall Leadership Conference, was a success. I actually tested positive for COVID the night before, which was quite horrible, so I was not attending, but from those who did, all reports say that it was, was very successful, which is awesome to hear. And then yesterday, we had a visit to Ridge Elementary School, um, so we talked about our H-E-A-R with them, um, and they were super, super engaged and had so much to say, which is why we have a second column of bullet points. Um, but when I talked about what it means to be here, they said it means to be present to learn, um, and specifically, they have an attendance goal of ninety-four percent, and they fill in the letters of attendance to get extra recess, and it seems to be working pretty well, because fifth grade is actually leading Ridge Elementary School for attendance, and I think they have an attendance of ninety-six right now, which is awesome.
Fantastic.
Um, and their MTSS is working really hard on celebrations, and that keeps them engaged in attendance as well, and the kids mentioned how much they love those celebrations. When I asked them what it means to be engaged in their learning, they said participating, being involved in class, and they are helped to be engaged by fun math games.
They love math.
Which is great to hear. When I asked them what it meant to be approachable, they said it was friendly and making friends, and they said their staff is super, super approachable and easy to ask questions, too. They loved the group projects, specifically the STEM group projects, and those helped them connect with each other, as well as working with others and playing together at recess, and they love field day because it allows them a chance to connect together and become more friendly, um, and specifically, they liked the water station, which me too. That was, that was my favorite in elementary school. I wish I had a water station on the hot days. Not today, because it's freezing, um, but in the hot days, for sure. When I asked them what it meant to be renewed in their education, they said, I love this, by the way, they said it's to mess up a problem and erase it to try it again. I think that is a perfect definition of being renewed. Um, and so they said that every morning, they start the morning with catch-up time with their must-do and may-do assignments, um, and so that helps them all get on the same page, so if they were, you know, falling behind, they can all get on the same page. Um, they're really renewed by whole group activities, um, and they have first chapter Friday, which is really fun. They read a first chapter of a book on Friday, and specifically, they liked the first chapter of the book framed, so I'll have to check it out. Um, they also like playing Wordle at the end of the day and getting their daily schedule every morning, so they're all on the same page. Um, they have a morning meeting where they talk about their feeling zones, and so that helps them get in the right mindset to learn every single day, and they've mentioned a ton about how they have the awesomest teachers in all of St. Mary's County, and I believe it, because they said teachers so many times, great teachers. They also loved their principal, Ms. Pataulka, who they apparently torture by taping to the wall and making a sundae on her face.
Yeah, they, yeah, she's, she's willing to participate to meet their goals, yep.
But they love her.
Yep.
They love her a lot, so it's always great. Um, fifth grade versus teachers, kickball and picnic, fifth grade has so far never beaten the teachers, but this is the year.
We said this is the year, they need to step up, yep.
Yeah, they're practicing, they're ready. Um, they also love celebrations such as the Fun Run, which they had earlier this year, and they also love the talent show, and they shouted out a kid in their class who was singing and dancing named Logan.
Yeah, well, he wouldn't, he didn't share, but I think that maybe.
He didn't share, but I think he was pretty awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was a great visit.
Awesome. We had fun, it's been good.
Alright, we have one recognition, so Ms. Colleen Gill, from Lenartown, uh, Lenartown High School, goodness.
Yep.
Alright, good morning. Today, I'm happy to present Lenartown High School with a Bronze Level recognition on the College Board's AP Honor Roll. Um, the honor roll is given for the first time this fall. It has four levels, bronze, silver, gold, and platinum. To be recognized on the AP Honor Roll in a given year, a school must meet the following criteria, and there are three areas, for their most recent graduating class. So we're looking at the graduating class of 2024. Forty percent or more of the graduating cohort took at least one AP exam during high school. At Lenartown High School, it was forty-two percent of their graduating seniors. Twenty-five percent or more of the graduating cohort scored a three or higher on at least one AP exam during high school. Lenartown High School's seniors were at thirty-three percent. And two percent or more of the graduating cohort took five or more AP exams during high school, with at least one exam happening during ninth and tenth grade, so it's not jamming all the exams into junior and senior year, it's spread throughout. And at Lenartown, they had fifteen percent of the graduating class of 2024 taking at least fi- taking five or more AP exams throughout high school. Um, so, we have a certificate from the College Board, and Mr. Copsy, Principal of Lenartown High School, is here to receive it, so I'd like to congratulate them on earning the Bronze Level for the AP Honor.
Appreciate that, thank you. Before you leave, go back, go back.
Do that, do in front of this.
If you, if you move over in front of the official, that's, yeah, do, yeah, and Ms. Gill, get over there, too. You're directly involved, absolutely. That's a great, if you can get that picture. Um, I do wanna say that advanced placement coursework at the high school level is at the same caliber and rigor of anything you will encounter in a college or university in the first two years. It is fantastic. These are some of our most important courses, and they really do challenge our students, and the fact that one-third of all students who attend our largest high school, over twenty-one hundred kids, we're talking over seven hundred kids, have taken and earned at least a three, which is a passing level score to earn college-level credit at the majority of colleges, universities across the United States. And just thank you very much to Lenartown High School. I know we could bring up Chopticon and Great Mills, and we're setting a bar for them as well to have them come, but it's because we all work together. Just thank you, Mr. Copsy, for your leadership at Lenartown High School. Thank you very much for calling, to Ms. Gill for supporting all of our excellent teachers, and particularly our AP teachers, so, wonderful. Now, if you wanna say something, you can.
No, no, no.
I was gonna say, you're a man, yes. Thank you. And congratulations on the football team, making it all the way up to beating regional champions. That's still a flag, that's the first flag that we're, you know, that's a banner. We haven't had that banner fly at Lenartown, and that's incredible, and so to the coach, Coach Cunningham, and all the coaching staff, and all the students, and all of the parents, that is just a, that's a fantastic accomplishment for Lenartown High School.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, we have no public hearing tonight. Any public comment? Okay. Ms. Penrod, do I need to read my statement?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. You know you have three minutes.
I do.
Kim will time you.
Come on in, smiles all.
Watch your black grapes.
Come this way.
There you go.
Come on in, come on.
Yeah.
Use our beautiful.
My partner crime right here. Alright. Good morning, my name is Sarah Penrod. I am the President of the Education Association of St. Mary's County, and I am joined today by our EastMCC Board of Directors. And we are here in solidarity to offer a very warm welcome to Mr. Josh Guy for joining the Board of Education as our newest member, and congratulations to Ms. Mary Washington and Ms. Kathy Allen for continuing to serve our students and our staff. Um, we're excited to have you join us, especially Mr. Josh, you are brand new. I'm super proud of you.
No, thank you.
Personal privilege. Um, we're excited to have you join us in the critical work of shaping the future of education in our community. Together, we have the opportunity to make a lasting impact on the lives of our students and our staff, and we're eager to collaborate with you in achieving that goal. Um, as educators, and all of us here are educators, uh, whether we are certificated members or we are education support professionals, we are deeply committed to ensuring that every child has the resources, support, and opportunities they need to succeed. We believe that a strong partnership between the Board, EastMCC, and the broader community is essential for creating an education system that is both equitable and effective. While challenges lie ahead, we are confident that with your leadership, we can address those challenges head-on and work towards solutions that benefit all students and staff, especially those who have been historically underserved. We are also committed to ensuring that our staff has the support, training, and resources necessary to do our jobs to the best of our ability. When teachers and support staff are supported, our students thrive. We believe that by working together, Board, educators, parents, and students, we can build a school system that fosters growth, opportunity, and success for every child. So we thank you for your dedication to education and your willingness to take on this very important and challenging work. We look forward to working with you and achieving great things together, so welcome to the team, and thank you for returning.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alright, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Today's consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes for November twentieth, 2024, personnel, teachers, there are no administrative and supervisory appointments, and a boundary change pack for Pax River Village. And with that, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, thank you very much. We have, um, two action items this morning. The first one is the contract approval on the negotiated agreement for the St. Mary's Association of Supervisors and Administrators, Ms. Dr. Daryl, Dale Farrell, sorry.
For the record, Dr. Farrell, I never touched that computer today, at all, alright? Not once. I was gonna run over and, oh, there.
Alright, well, good morning, Board members, and welcome, Mr. Guy, welcome back, Ms. Washington and Ms. Allen.
Thank you.
We are going to be talking about the negotiated agreement for SMASA. Um, we, I am seeking approval for a four-year negotiated agreement from FY twenty-six through FY twenty-nine between the St. Mary's Assos- St. Mary's Association of Supervisors and Administrators and the Board of Education of St. Mary's County. So, kinda looking through our timeline, um, we began with an initial session on October twenty-second. We had a second session on October twenty-ninth, and then our third session, which, which went well into the night, ended around eight-thirty PM, um, November fifth, where we reached a tentative agreement. On November twenty-first, the SMASA membership ratified the tentative agreement, and today we are seeking Board of Education approval. The negotiating teams for SMASA, Dan Besik, the MSEA Uniserve Director, was the chief negotiator. Uh, Jeff Thompson was the SMASA Negotiations Chair. Uh, Mr. Copsy was one of the SMASA representatives. Uh, Ms. Jamison was another SMASA representative, and Ms. Stephanie Stone was their last SMASA representative. For the Board, I was the chief negotiator. I was joined by Lisa Bachner, our Chief Academic Officer, uh, Dr. J.R. Beavers, our Acting Deputy Superintendent, uh, Ms. Tammy McCourt, our Deputy Superintendent for Finance and Supporting Services, um, Dr. Maury Montgomery, the outgoing Deputy Superintendent, uh, Ms. Sujavarghese, Chief Counsel, Mike Watson, our newly-appointed Chief Operating Officer, and then Melissa Evans served as our recorder during the sessions. So, some of the contract changes, the highlights, um, of the agreement. So we revised some citations where legislation had changed, or we needed to reference different legislation throughout the document. Um, we revised some existing language to put it in the appropriate article, so things like pre-allocated leave are under the leave article now versus just outstanding somewhere else in the agreement. Um, we talked about this with the EastMCC agreement, but, um, we provide a duty-free lunch for up to an hour if we are providing off-site training where lunch isn't provided. And so, a lot of times when we do off-site trainings, we do bring lunch in, um, and then there's, it's the thirty-minute duty-free lunch. Um, but in case that, you know, that's not an option, uh, we will provide individuals up to an hour to go out and get lunch and come back. Uh, we aligned the process for evaluating employees for intoxication to mirror our EastMCC agreements. Uh, we removed the summer compressed work schedule language. We revised our degree stipends, so for, um, any employees in the unit that have a master's degree, um, there'll be one stipend of twenty-five hundred dollars, and for the doctorate, um, that stipend will go to five thousand dollars. Um, we have, uh, changes to our prescription and emergency room co-pays that will go into effect beginning July one, 2027. Um, SMASA also adopted the Medicare Group Advantage Plan and the Prudent RX Plans, uh, which will go into effect immediately. And then, um, we increased the personal leave sellback for eleven-month employees from three days to four days. We implemented, uh, military leave and admin leave for open houses, which just, again, mirrors our other contracts. Um, we revised tuition reimbursement. Again, it will also mirror our EastMCC contract, um, thirty-five hundred dollars for the next two fiscal years, and then moving to four thousand for the final two fiscal years of the agreement. Um, we defined that employees and/or their representative have access to information regarding reports or investigation or things like that, whenever there's an employee investigation, um, report, or investigation, or meeting, due process meeting, hearing, things like that, um, making sure that, that we're providing them exactly what we've collected, um, when we're building the case, uh, for whatever happened. Um, then defining how administrative leave is handled for, um, the Association President whenever the Board or the Superintendent requests their attendance during the duty day. Um, when employees do separate from us, you know, we give employees a lot of technologies, um, so we define the process for which we get those, um, technologies back, or we collect the, the financial component of it to, to repay, to be able to provide those electronics to someone else. Um, and then we agreed to have the contract, um, closed for the next four years, except for any, um, thing that has like a legislative requirement or blueprint requirement that may come up over the next four years that we may need to reopen, um, for those items. So, talking about salary, uh, we will be compressing our scale and looking at our scale a little bit differently beginning next year, so employees will be placed on the new scale. They will receive a step with a one percent full-scale adjustment, and the following year, they'll have a step progression with a two percent, two percent scale adjustment, and the third year, a step progression with a three percent scale adjustment, and in the final year, again, a step progression with a two percent adjustment. Um, these are examples of our new salary schedules for the next four years. So, the first one, first two are FY twenty-six and FY twenty-seven, so you can see what those calculations are gonna look like, um, for each of the positions, and you'll see that each of the positions in this SMASA unit are at the top of each of our salary scales. And these are for the final two years of the contract, FY twenty-eight and FY twenty-nine. So I'm recommending that the Board approve, the recommendation of the Superintendent, to approve the FY twenty-six through FY twenty-nine negotiated agreement between SMASA and the Board of Education. Questions?
I'm gonna start at this end, since Josh will give him a moment to get, get his feet wet here. Kathy, you're up.
I don't have any questions. We have, you know, reviewed this as, um, appropriate throughout the process, um, but I do want to say how much I appreciate, um, the work put in by the two teams, um, to bring this to fruition. Um, and one thing I can always say, um, about St. Mary's County is that we work hard to have a good working relationship with, um, our associations. It doesn't mean that we roll over, as some people seem to think, but rather, um, that we understand that, um, that our support of our groups means that it's one way they understand how much their work is valued, um, and the, um, but the, the trust that goes, uh, as a two-way street, I think is incredibly important, and it's something that isn't, um, isn't always, doesn't always happen across the state. Um, it takes a lot of maturity, um, and a lot of, of willingness to work on both sides to make this happen, and for that, um, I congratulate all of you, so thank you.
Thank you.
I wanna thank both sides for working respectfully, cooperatively, and harmoniously to reach a negotiated agreement. So thank you for that, and I appreciate the hard work and the hours that you put in to reach such an agreement. This will move the system forward, and if it benefits teachers, it benefits students, and it benefits the entire system. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh, do you have any questions?
I gotta, I have no questions. Uh, I thank both sides for, uh, coming to this agreement. I did a deep dive into it the, the other night, and I, I think it's pretty good, so.
Awesome. I don't have any questions either, but I definitely wanna thank you all for negotiating this. Um, it means a lot to students to have our administrators in a place where they're happy, um, and content, and I know, just visiting Ridge Elementary School yesterday, I asked them what their favorite thing about the school was, and they said, "Our principal, we love our principal," and so kids really love their administrators, and so it's really important to see them happy.
My only comment is, I'm thankful for the four-year agreement. I mean, we are one of the few LEAs across the state that have, that have had four-year agreements, and I think, I mean, we've had them in my entire tenure here, so it does a lot for, I think, stability, it does a lot for people's peace of mind, our employees' peace of mind, it certainly helps out on the budget side, and, you know, what our requests and needs are going to be. So, um, you know, once again, hats off for yet another four-year contract, so, very well done.
And Chairperson Bailey, basically, I, the exact same thing.
I say your funder?
The, yeah, well, it really is, it's the, please understand how special it is to have a four-year agreement. This is not, we, we just assume that everybody gets together, we work out those things, we understand where we are today and where we wanna be four years from now, and we're able to negotiate a four-year agreement. That is not the case in most school systems, and most employees do not necessarily know what their, what their salary will be next year and the year after year after year. That is, that is exceptionally helpful. It is also incredibly transparent. We can tell you, really, without, because we're not gonna be adding, or, we, we can tell you what the cost is going to be to operate the school system in twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine, based on negotiated agreements that are put in place. I will also say the creativity that was used to go and negotiate this, this, this four-year agreement is fantastic. The first year collapsing a lane, recognizing that is, teachers make more money, the, the first salary level doesn't necessarily give us the flexibility to offer a salary that is above what they're currently making as a teacher, so dropping that first lane and compressing the salary scale makes a great deal of sense. And two percent aligns to what, what everyone else is receiving, the three percent in twenty-seven is offset. The three percent in twenty-seven is offset by some other elements with, with pharmaceuticals, with co-pays, with, with healthcare. And so, all of this trends in the right way, because we are all working together. And I just, I thank, I thank the team from SMASA that came forward and, and met, met in the middle at the table, as well as the staff from Saint Mary's County, to really understand what drives our work. So, I just, I thank you for all of that.
Right. Well, and one last comment. It also helps on the county side, because as they go forward and, and, you know, go for their different bond ratings, right? I mean, we're one of the largest expenses on the county side, and we have locked in salaries, which is our largest expense, so, you know, it makes it much easier for them to, you know, to, to discuss with the banks when, when that's happening, so.
Project future costs.
Exactly. All right, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-six through fiscal year twenty twenty-nine negotiated agreement between the Saint Mary's Association of Supervisors and Administrators, SMASA agreement, and the Board of Education of Saint Mary's County.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Do we wanna sign now or after the meeting?
Well, I think it'd be great if we signed now, and then it gives everybody an opportunity to get on with whatever. That you, you're all, of course, more than welcome to stay with us, because it is fascinating, and it's, it's a, it's a, it's a great presentation Ms. Howell's gonna give. But let's take a quick break so we can get.
So, we'll be back in like, shortly.
All right.